Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to the June meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. So good to see all you folks in our audience tonight. Oftentimes, we have the fries here and nobody else, so it's always good to see and see a crowd that is here to take part in your town government. Welcome, welcome, and thanks for being with us. We'll start off with our roll call of our council members in our traditional way.
Good evening, I'm Jane Welch, welcome.
Good evening, I'm David Smitherman.
Evening, I'm Jean Marie Foster.
And Mike Horn.
Ken Sadler.
Happy Thursday, I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
Very good. Folks, we'll now have our invocation, and thank you Pastor Tom for stepping in at the last minute. You're always, you're always great to have at our meetings, and you'll lead us in our invocation, and then we'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Ken Sadler. So please, if you're able, join us, stand us, standing for us.
Let us pray. Our fathers, we come together tonight, we pray that we may be aware of your presence with us. We're grateful for the many blessings that we have, for the blessing of the town that we live in, and for the leaders who seek to give guidance to this town, that we might have the good things in life. We pray for our nation, and with all the difficulties, with the violence and other serious problems, and we pray for our leaders, that they may have the wisdom to make wise decisions. We pray too for the people in the world who's suffering because of war, be with them, and as we go through this night, may we continue to be aware of your presence, help us to be aware of the parts that we play, and help us always to remember that though we may have differences of opinions and belief, we're one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Have we had any additions or changes to our agenda since it went out?
No, sir.
Very good. Council members, if there are no changes or additions that you would wish to make, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So move.
Okay, in unison, Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion?
Ms. Welch.
Oh, it was Ms. Welch, okay. It was in stereo, I thought, something going on there. Very good. If there are no discussions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Stacy, you want to walk us through our consent agenda, please?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Tonight on the consent agenda is Resolution 2022-039, Acceptance and Approval of Monthly Financials for 10 Months Ending April 30, 2022, April of Special Meeting, Approval of Special Meeting Minutes, April 25, 2022, Approval of Agenda Briefing Minutes, May 5, 2022, Approval of Budget Meeting Minutes, May 5, 2022, Approval of Closed Session Minutes, May 5 of 2022, Approval of Budget Meeting Minutes, May 9 of 2022, Approval of Regular Meeting Minutes, May 12 of 2022, and lastly, Approval of Closed Session Minutes, May 12 of 2022.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy? Ladies and gentlemen, consent agenda are items that come routinely before the council. We take them all as a group unless there is an exception, that a council member would like to have one discussed individually, at which time, they can pull that from the consent agenda, and we can talk that, talk about that separately. If not, council members, will entertain a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We have several presentations to make tonight. First, I'd like to recognize our state representative, Jeff Zinger, who has a special acknowledgement and recognition he'd like to make this evening. Let me get the microphone, so folks at home can hear.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, we have a lot of veterans in our, in our area, and a lot of us can remember Bill Crawford, the taxpaying citizen, who was a World War II vet, or Speedy Spock, but there's also many others that walk among us. But we've got one here tonight, a friend of mine, Colonel Thompson, who just retired from the Army Air Corps, and I got to go down to Fort Bragg to see his retirement, and it was unbelievable. He lives among us, walks among us, but what he has done in his career was really, really special. So what I wanted to do is to, he's one of us, I wanted us as citizens of Lewisville to acknowledge his career and his retirement, and so that's what we're here to do tonight. So Colonel, if you would come up this way, I'd appreciate it. So this is Colonel Thompson. Thank you for coming. So I hate to do this, but I'm gonna read a little bit about his career here, and it's kind of long, because he's had a really long career. And so I've got 36 years squished down to about two pages, so hang on. So Colonel Thompson enlisted in the Maryland National Guard on March 20, 1986, while serving as a member of the Army National Guard. Colonel Thompson attended Salisbury University, who was awarded a Bachelor of Science degree in Respiratory Therapy. Upon receiving his undergraduate degree, he was selected for regular Army commission and commissioned as a Second Lieutenant in the Medical Service Corps, graduating as a distinguished military graduate due to his high scholastic performance. Colonel Thompson continued to excel throughout his military career, attending various professional military education courses and schools such as the Army Medical Department Officer Basic, Advanced Courses, and the Army Command and General Staff College, and the Naval War College, College of Command and Staff. Additionally, Colonel Thompson pursued advanced medical education, going on to receive his Physician Assistant Training at Wake Forest University's Bowman Gray School of Medicine, and ultimately completing his Masters of Physician Assistant Studies at the University of Nebraska Medical Center, and his mini MBA at Clemson University. Throughout his 36 years of honorable service, Colonel Thompson held a variety of positions, from his first enlisted assignment as a Combat Medical Specialist, to his first assignment as a commissioned officer, as a Treatment Platoon Leader, to his final assignment as Deputy Command Surgeon of U.S. Army Civil Affairs and Psychological Operations Command Airborne. He excelled at each level of his increased responsibility and leadership. His dedication to duty was further displayed during his deployments in support of various operations around the world. While being deployed in support of Operation Uphold Democracy in Haiti, he served on the staff of the Joint Task Force Surgeon. At the outbreak of the Global War on Terror in 2003, Colonel Thompson deployed to Afghanistan as part of the 10th Mountain Division and Task Force Panther. In 2005, Colonel Thompson deployed to Louisiana with the North Carolina Quick Reaction Force in support of the Hurricane Katrina humanitarian support operations. Upon transferring from the Army National Guard to the United States Army Reserve, he was assigned to the U.S. Army Special Operations Command and deployed to South Korea. In 2010, while he still, was still assigned to the U.S. Army Special Operations Command, Colonel Thompson deployed to Bahrain as a command surgeon, Joint Special Operations Task Force Cooperation Council as part of the Naval Special Warfare in Unit 3. Colonel Thompson's exemplary service and commitment to the nation through times of war and peace have been steadfast, unwavering, and in keeping with Army values. His actions directly impacted the lives and the well-being of innumerable men and women and children he cared for around the world. His dedicated and honorable service can be seen in the multiple awards and decorations he's earned throughout his career. These awards include the Meredith Service Medal, Air Medal, Joint Service Commendation Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Four Oak Leaf Clusters, Commander's Award for Civilian Service, Joint Service Achievement Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Three Oak Leaf Clusters, Army Reserve Components Achievement Medal with Four Bronze Oak Leaf Clusters, Bahrain Ministry of Interior Commander's Award, the Comedian Commander's Commendation, 36 Canadian Brigade Group, just to name a few, just to name a few. Upon retirement, Colonel Thompson's final assignment was the U.S. Army Civil Affairs and Psychological Operations Command Airborne as a Deputy Command Surgeon. The U.S. Army Civil Affairs and Psychological Operations Command Airborne is made up of nearly 13,000 soldiers, serving in Civil Affairs, Military Information Support Operations, and Information Operation Units located in 30 states. At any given time, I don't know how to say that acronym, what you said, soldiers are operating in every geographic region in more than 20 countries around the world. As a Deputy Command Surgeon for Command, Colonel Thompson advised the commanding general on medical issues to include medical readiness and command health force protection. He also provided guidance and assistance to all subordinate units in the areas of medical readiness and medical initiatives to improve overall soldier readiness. Additionally, he provided routine reports to help senior leaders maintain awareness of medical readiness, posture, readiness posture of the command, as well as determine the effectiveness and policy of resourcing decisions.
Wow.
So, Colonel Thompson just retired, 36 years, and so what we did, is I had this flag, was flown over the Capitol on your last day of service in the Army. And this certificate from the governor is in here for that. And so on behalf of the residents of the 74th District, but particularly your friends and neighbors of Lewisville, well done, we appreciate your service, and we are very grateful. And I think that you need to be saluted. Now, I've done public service, but I've never served in the, in the Army, or in the military. But I have a friend here, Sergeant Charlie Prentice, who I've known for a few years, he's a good man. If the, he's gonna lead all the veterans in the room, and I think Dr. Sadler, you're not a veteran, yep?
Yeah.
In a salute.
Ready, set, go! Freezing, go! Order, go! Eddie!
Colonel, also for you to say hello to Colonel Ken Sadler, U.S. Army retired.
Our next presentation this evening is from PJ Stringer, with our Public Safety Report. Welcome PJ.
Colonel Thompson, thank you for your service on behalf of community police, and thank you for your dedication to the citizens of the U.S. Thank you. Our stats for the month of May, 492, as you can see, compared to 528 this time last year. 177 security checks, 274 last year, were 19 traffic arrests and violations, and 15, and then 21 alarms, and 26, so pretty close, and about a five-minute response time for our priority calls. No major significant events to report. Summertime's coming, it's here, kids are getting out of school tomorrow, so pedestrian traffic is gonna pick up, people are getting out, walking, and staying daylight a lot longer, so I thought it might be appropriate to talk about some pedestrian safety tips. When I started pulling some numbers, interesting facts that I pulled from National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, 2019, 6,200 people killed walking, 6,200 pedestrians killed, 76,000 among the whole U.S. injured. So, just some common tips that I encourage your parents to stay focused and pass on to their, to young people. Walk facing traffic, try to cross at the crosswalks and intersection, and that goes for if you're coming up here to one of the events in town. We typically try to stage a couple deputies at North Street and Schallifer Road, and again at Arrow Leaf, so we encourage you to try to use those, don't try to cross in the, at the post office. These intersections are dark, and it's dark through there, so we've got our patrol cars and deputies stationed there, we can't keep somebody at every point of it. So try to, try to cross at the intersections, that'll keep everybody safe, and it's easier for the motors to spot you if you're next to those cars. So remember, you can't, you can't react to what you can't see, so you always wanna walk where you can have reaction time, and keep your AirPods cut down so you can hear these cars coming. All right? But I thank y'all for letting me be here, and y'all have a good rest of the week.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you Sergeant Stringer for coming every month, and for your excellent performance of your duties, as well as your deputies. In lieu of all the recent shootings, of course, in another school, my understanding is our Sheriff Kimbrough has an SRO, SRO in each of the Forsyth County Schools, is that correct?
That's correct. When Sheriff Kimbrough, the schools have always been his passion, they, he holds those near and dear to his heart. When the event occurred in Texas, he stepped up and said, "We're gonna make sure that there's a SRO at every school." Basically, if you were at the sheriff's office and you have a gun and a badge, you get out, and the fire chief, Tim Lasley, actually called me and he said, "Man, what's going on with all the deputies everywhere?" He said, "They're just everywhere." So Sheriff Kimbrough has, has really increased the presence in the schools, and you gotta remember, some of our best security is some of the security that people doesn't even know about, so we can't let everybody know what's happened, but I can promise you that Sheriff Kimbrough is taking it very seriously.
Thank you PJ.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alrighty, we have another presentation. Jay Alred, how about coming up here? When I can recognize outstanding accomplishment by Lewisville residents, and those who really distinguish themselves, not just locally, but nationally. Jay is the golf coach of the women's golf team at Reagan High School. What many people don't realize is they were national champs in 2021, which is quite an amazing honor. You all must have done just a fabulous job. We have a number of players who live in Lewisville, but we wanted to recognize you tonight. In fact, Council Member Jane Welch said, "You know, that was quite an accomplishment, we need to do something to recognize those people." So if you'll hold this for a second. Okay, Jay, your eyeballs are probably better than mine, but let me see if I can read it. This is in recognition of outstanding athletic achievement, the town of Lewisville proudly congratulates the Reagan High School, Reagan High School Girls Golf Team as the number one ranked team in the nation by the National High School Golf Association for the year 2020 and 2021 season. Jay, I hope you'll find a place for that, and put it someplace where everybody can be proud, because we're proud of you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. And, yeah. This is just a great community, you know, it's rather interesting, a lot of them come from Lewisville and Pofftown, and we don't even have a golf course there. And, but they go out of their way, we've kind of built a tradition over the years, and so, you know, quite honestly, dads see it, and they want to get their young daughters involved, and, and this has kind of evolved that way, and so, you know, we just, and Jane will tell you, those, those girls are amazing, they're at, they're at Maple Chase Golf Club, like from sunup to sundown, I mean, and they're living a great life doing it. So, but thank y'all for the town and the support and everything, we appreciate it.
Coach, let me give you the box, too. And be careful, that's Weatherford Crystal, so. Folks, we have a number of you who have signed up to speak this evening. We'll actually have three opportunities. This first is our public forum, where residents can come and address council on any matter that's important to you, that you'd like to share with us. We also have a public hearing on the proposed LRO changes, and we also have a public hearing on our budget for the 2022-23 budget year. So if you're here to speak on the budget or the LRO proposed changes, hold your comments until that section. Otherwise, we'll open our public forum, I think, Daniel, is it Gapstoney?
Yeah, I'm here for the LRO.
Very good. Anybody here to speak at the generally public forum? Alrighty, thank you. Stacy, we're to the point where we have our public hearing on our budget. Council members, we've all worked hard over the last few months, staff particularly has put together a budget that I think we're all, all can be proud of. You want to give us some highlights?
Sure thing. Pam has graciously planted before you the highlights that I'm gonna read over tonight, so you can follow along. The proposed budget for the general fund is $6,546,062, an increase of 23.2% over the prior year's budget as adopted for July 1, 2021. The budget as proposed includes maintaining the current tax rate of 17.7 cents per $100 of valuation. This budget is balanced with $1,205,260 in fund balance from the general fund. The town of Lewisville also collects a levy for a municipal service district. The budget as proposed includes maintaining the current tax rate of 5 cents per $100 of valuation. According to the Forsyth County Tax Appraisers, the total tax value for the town of Lewisville for the upcoming fiscal year is estimated at $1,677,399,050. This produces an estimated ad lorm tax revenue of $2,879,926. For town services, budgeting for the economic uncertainty of our municipal revenues and the increase in our service costs due to the spike in inflation has been a challenge. However, the town of Lewisville stays committed to the continuation of all of its existing services for the upcoming fiscal year to include parks and recreation, finance, administration, planning and zoning, public works, residential garbage and recycling, stormwater management, community policing, and beautification. All services are proposed to continue at current service delivery levels for the upcoming fiscal year. Capital reserve funds. The town currently has eight, has four capital reserve funds. Council discussion during the budget workshops over the previous weeks yielded the following recommendations for the 2022-2023 budget. GWR, Right-of-Way Construction Capital Reserve. The town currently has $1,49,720 saved in the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Reserve, and $735,013 available in the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Projects Fund. Between these two funds, the town has $1,784,733 to fund any future expenditures related to the Great Wagon Road. With the spike in inflation increasing the town's service cost, council has chosen to suspend its annual contribution of $115,000 to the Great Wagon Road Construction Capital Reserve in the 22-23 budget. Sidewalks, Bike Paths, and Greenways Capital Reserve. The annual transfer of $25,000 from the general fund to the Sidewalks, Bike Paths, and Greenways Capital Reserve will remain in the proposed budget at the recommendation of council. The current balance in the capital reserve is $132,098. Municipal Buildings Land Capital Reserve. The current balance in the Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve is $130,218. Council has chosen to suspend its annual contribution of $170,000 to the Municipal Buildings Land Capital Reserve in the 22-23 budget to help fund the debt service on the $2 million installment bank loan on the newly constructed Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Public Works Facility Capital Reserve. The current balance in the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve is $329,692. Council recommends maintaining the annual transfer of $95,000 from the general fund and adding an additional contribution of $400,000 from the general fund in the 22-23 budget. This additional, additional $400,000 comp contribution was made possible when $937,048 of the town's ARPA funding was transferred to the general fund in the current fiscal year to reimburse for general government services. Thus, council recommends that a total of $495,000 be transferred to the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve in the 22-23 budget. Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve. Council recommends the formation of another capital reserve entitled Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve. This reserve will accumulate funds for future parks and recreation facilities and amenities in keeping with the newly adopted Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Master Plan. It is proposed that the annual contribution to this reserve be $400,000. This contribution is made possible by the ARPA funding received in the current fiscal year. Thus, proposed funding in this budget for all capital reserves is $920,000.
Any questions for Stacy? We, those are a lot of numbers, folks, and they, they demonstrate a number of things. Number one, all of those are special capital project funds that we set up, and they act like savings account. We started these, oh gosh, back in 1995, setting up our capital reserves, and over the years, we make an annual contribution through them, to them, through our budget process. They enabled us to build Town Hall, they enabled us to build the Mary Alice Warren Community Center, they enabled us to do a number of road projects and sidewalk projects, but because we had money in savings account, we were able to do it with minimal impact on town operations or the town, or the town tax rate. It's probably important to note that the last time Lewisville had any kind of tax increase was 17 and a half years ago. So we've been able to grow our funds, grow our reserve, do the projects for the town to make us a great place to live without imposing additional taxes on our residents. We do that for a number, we do that through a number of reasons, a lot of it is just the management of our growth. Everybody wants to live in Lewisville, but I think we've been able to, to manage growth, but also grow our budget, so that we're able to do a number of these things. Council members, any comments or questions for Stacy before we open the public hearing?
I have a comment, Mayor. I just want to thank the staff throughout this process, and throughout the numerous budget workshops that we had. We came in and it didn't look like it did when we finished, so thank you guys, and thanks to other council members for the diligent effort you guys put in and, and doing this. So thank you guys.
Council members? Very good. This is a public hearing for the 2022-23 budget for the town of Lewisville. Does anybody wish to comment during this public hearing? This is your opportunity to comment on our budget. Anyone at all? If not, we will close the public hearing. Council members, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Smitherman makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second, to approve the 2022-23 budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, folks, and thank you again also, staff. Alrighty, our second public hearing is for the proposed changes in our UDO for the Lewisville Rural Overlay. Stacy, will you give us just a quick update? We were briefed on this on briefing.
So tonight before us, council, is UDO L167. It is a text amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance that deals with the Lewisville Rural Overlay and some other changes that could impact development into the rural areas of our town. As discussed at the town council briefing meeting last week, I did want to share some highlights of the proposed text amendment that we've gone over. This amendment comes as a recommendation from the planning board with the following changes to the Unified Development Ordinance. The Lewisville Rural Overlay Boundary Map, that is something that is currently not defined in our Unified Development Ordinance. So the planning board is proposing that the map for the Lewisville Rural Overlay follow that of the rural residential designation in our newly adopted Comprehensive Plan on the Future Land Use Map. Most of those areas are in the rural areas of the town, they follow a lot of the areas along our heritage corridors of the town. This amendment as proposed also would limit the extension of wastewater treatment plants into areas within the Lewisville Rural Overlay. This amendment removes the permission to allow planned residential developments in the YR, which is the Yakkin River Conservation Zoning District, AG, which is the Agricultural Zoning District, RS40, which is residential single-family for minimum lot sizes of 40,000 square feet, and also RS30 zoning district, that's again residential single-family with minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet. All of those zoning districts are considered our low-density or low-impact zoning districts here in town. I would also like to add that since the briefing meeting, there have been some concerns raised that the proposal may need further thought in regard to changes that are recommended, but these are the major But these are the major changes and the highlights, other than some grammar things that we found in the UDO in these sections that needed to be corrected. So I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Any questions for Stacy? If not, this is a public hearing for UDO L 167, the Lewisville Rural Overlay. I believe Mr., is it Gap Bastoni?
Passio.
Thank you. I'm going to go with Daniel. So come up there. If you'll come up, state your name and your address, please.
Say it again. Daniel Capastione, 794 Conrad Road, Lewisville. I've been in Lewisville for 25 years. And I read over the proposed text changes and some of the district changes that are for review tonight. And I want to, first of all, thank the planning board and town council for hearing some of our comments in the past about the certain areas along the Conrad corridor and some of the, and those changes that are reflected in the text that I reviewed, I'm in favor for, and I wanted to express my appreciation for listening to the citizens of Lewisville and also coming up with recommendations for changing to further solidify the integrity of the plan for the town with regard to those rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sherrod McDavid. Sherrod McDavid. All righty. Brett Nelson. Come on up, Mr. Nelson.
Brett Nelson, 148 Allmont Forest in Clemmons. I've lived in Clemmons the last, with my wife, the last 20 years. Prior to that, we've lived in Lewisville for 15 years. Lewisville's doing it right. Clemmons has put in so many apartments and so many cluster homes that it's a little embarrassing. And what we've been told is that this is happening to help the tax rate, and yet last year, the tax rate was increased. It's not working. They're trying to put a cluster development north of Waterford that will run directly through that subdivision. It just makes no sense. So my wife and I are trying to make a decision. Do we remain in Clemmons or do we move to Lewisville? And from what I'm seeing here with the idea of, you know, one residence or one home or whatever it is per three acres, that's exceptional. That's exciting. When I saw and went online to just kind of look and see what's going on, the idea of eliminating the cluster developments, I can tell you that's a great idea, eliminate, because it doesn't help the tax base and it increases traffic. So, again, like Aron Schwarzenegger said, we hope to be back, but again, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. John Huffman. John Huffman.
I yield to Mandy Haggerson.
Very good. Well, Mandy, you just happened to be the next one signed up, so Mandy. Is it Maggerson or Haggerson?
It's Haggerson.
Haggerson, thank you, just like Maryland.
My name is Mandy Haggerson. I am at 832 Conrad Road in Lewisville, and I echo the sentiments of Daniel. I really appreciate what everyone is trying to do. I think everyone saw how the community felt about overdevelopment. Over 900 people signed a petition, and it's one of the most packed meetings I've ever seen. Felt lucky to get a seat that day. So I want to thank the planning board for their thoughtful text amendment with the language. I think, like Brett said, you guys are trying to do it right, and we appreciate it. You've got all of our attention. We're all taking note, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Lang Wilcox.
Good evening, council people. I'm Lang Wilcox, 1210 Forestwood Drive. I have been a part of a lot of what you all have done, sat on the council, done lots of different things in the town, and have tried to help for a number of years and have lived here, moved here in '83, and have been developing and building for a long period of time around here. And I'll back up. There's a lot to unpack with this, and I'll explain some of that real quickly, but we there, over the years, a lot of time has been spent on this, where in 2007, there was an LRO, and it didn't work to the benefit of the area at the time it was felt. I developed La Sara in the county in 2007 as a result of that directly. You've got La Sara on the county side that everybody around here seems to love. I think we used the land responsibly and used a PRD. We also used a private wastewater treatment plant that we permitted through federal government, state manages by the state on a, and we run it on a daily basis. During the course of 2007 to 2012, there were lots of conversations about, why'd you do it in the county? Why didn't you come into Lewisville? And as we were looking around the county, you know, I was participating in some things, talking to a lot of people here, and the conversations were sort of like, well, we spent X number of dollars in time on a 1997 sewer study. How do we bring City County Sewer to the Lewisville area? How do we do it well? Oh, my God, our ordinances aren't right to be able to manage that. So in 2012, 2013, there was a lot of activity in, okay, we're doing another sewer study from 2005, I believe it was, we were getting ready, we were talking about doing a third. City County Utilities were talking about coming out here. There was conversation between Lewisville and CCUC and how to make that happen. Meetings between several of the towns trying to establish kind of a group of communities to try to do that, working with the county commissioners and trying to see how that could happen. During that timeframe, there's a lot of activity in Lewisville saying, okay, well, if we're going to have this out here, we need to figure out what our ordinances need to be. Well, how do we protect this? Okay? And so as this stuff came about, there were years spent with, and I'm trying to express to you, the number of people involved in making that change that was adopted by council in 2014. There are, obviously, based on some of the recent responses, there's things that did not get caught in that. There's some tweaking of that language that I don't disagree with, sensitive areas that need to be taken a look at. But the new language on the LRO stops the ability to be able to manage correctly when you have the sewer opportunities out here. My private wastewater treatment plant, sewer approaching of and over Lewisville Vianna Road. So my point is just that there's a lot to unpack. There were years spent in developing the 2014 version. Forsyth County maintains PRDs for a reason. They're very restrictive. They do a good job at managing that as an avenue to be able to develop property. I think that the current document that you have in front of you, and I found common ground to speak with several of you in the planning board, that this needs to go back, have some additional people brought into the picture, whether it's myself, some business people in the area, the City County Utilities, Forsyth County Planning staff, all of those people were engaged in that 2012 to 2014 thing. That didn't happen here. Not to say that all this is bad, it's just not right. It needs to be taken a look at. I'd like for you to send this back to the planning board to be able to take a look at, work with additional parties to make sure this is fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? This is our public hearing. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council members, we've had some discussion. Mr. Wilcox has spent some time with me, has spent some time with our manager. I've spent some time trying to take a look at where we are, particularly with PRDs. When we first adopted them, we thought that they were a really good idea because they helped us create density while still maintaining open space and tracks that otherwise could have been developed much more extensively. My concern with this particular revision is that removing PRDs completely, I'm a little uncomfortable with at this point. I want to understand it better. I'd like for the planning board to take a little time and just revisit it. Do we really want to remove PRDs entirely? Or do we want to come back and say, let's look at where the problem was that caused us to want to remove PRDs entirely? And then let's make the adjustments that we can. I'm a believer in PRDs. I think we've had a number of successful ones throughout Lewisville that have benefited our residents and benefited us greatly. Council, I would like to recommend that we continue this public hearing for 60 days. That's two months. Stacy, I'd like you to take, now you have your town planner hat on as opposed to your interim manager hat on, take it back to the planning board. I think there are some folks that need to be involved in the discussion, certainly CCUC needs to be involved in the discussion on this, and just take a little closer look on it. I know the council members will want to work closely with everybody. I know there are people in the community that want to work closely. We have a number of folks in the neighborhoods out there that have a keen interest in this. Let's just take a little bit longer and make sure, as we say, we get it right, rather than doing a kind of a quick removal of the PRDs without really considering the impact that that might have.
Absolutely, Mayor. I think that there are ways that we can accommodate what we're still trying to accomplish. The planning board has started taking a look at PRDs in general and how our standards stand up to other standards of other areas around us, taking a look at how some other municipalities do it, how the county does it, and that sort of thing, so to try to, again, accomplish what our main goal is here.
And let me say, I don't think there's a council member that does not disagree with the principles that are expressed in the Lewisville Rural Overlay. I think we are solidly behind those. I think we just want to take a look at the technical part on how we accomplish that and make sure that we're doing it the right way. Council members, that would be my motion to continue this for 60 days?
Would that be until the August regularly scheduled meeting?
Would be the
Skip July?
September.
Skip July, it'd be the August regular meeting, yes, sir.
Yeah. 60 days.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Council members, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir. Ms. Waltz, and then Dr. Sadler.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Stacy, I know my concern when you have those planned residential developments, that seems to help Lewisville then to have a balanced sense of population, when I think if we don't have those, it just seems then that the town can become a little lopsided with wealthier instead of a balanced community. Would you address that as you research it and how Lewisville meets, well, just what we do have as far as individual properties that possibly, you know, would meet all levels of income?
Absolutely. Jane, we can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Dr. Sadler?
My question is just a time and question. Is there any downside to the delay?
I don't believe that there is. In conversations that we've had, again, I think we all have the same goal in mind, especially for that area of town. We met last, the planning board met last night, and they are aware of some of the concerns, so we can go ahead and start taking a look at that. So I don't believe there's really a concern for the delay.
Okay.
I have a question. Will there be another public forum, I mean, public comment or forum during this process that you guys will hear from the public?
I believe so. We would have to take a look at, I'm just trying to think of schematics here for the planning board. Generally, when, and I don't have Beau next to me, but if the text amendment is significantly different, then I think it would be best for us to have an ability for the public to comment at the planning board level as well.
Yeah, I'd like that to be considered as we're amending this particular item. Thank you.
Couple, couple questions. So you've really addressed it, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So the additional 60 days doesn't create any kind of risk or vulnerability as far as you're concerned?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So when you talked about looking at other municipalities and the way they're doing it and how it works, I assume that includes looking at the rationale for quasi-judicial or excluding quasi-judicial?
Yes, we have talked about that at planning board. That has been part of our discussion thus far. We haven't necessarily settled on, you know, how that would go ultimately. Again, that would be a council decision if council would want the approval process to be different, but that is something that the planning board can take a look at and recommend to council if they so choose, or if council so chooses.
And just for the people who are watching, can you just briefly explain the difference between quasi-judicial and the normal legislative process?
Yeah, legislative is what our rezonings go through. When a property is rezoned, then you have a public hearing. All sorts of testimony can be taken into consideration for a legislative hearing. For quasi-judicial hearings, that proceeds more like a court proceeding. There are finding of fact that the planning board must find, seven facts, to be exact, and then four findings of fact at the council level that have to be found at the quasi-judicial hearings in order for one of those special use permits to be approved. So whenever they're taking into consideration to say whether or not the project meets or does not meet those findings of, or, you know, meets those findings of fact, hearsay is not allowed to be taken into consideration. It has to be factual evidence. It has to be from experts or certified witnesses. There are opportunities for cross-examination in a quasi-judicial hearing, and no ex parte communication can take place. So what that means is no outside conversations about the project can take place, either by planning board members or by council members, because all are supposed to be making their decision based on the same testimony that they hear in those public hearings. So that's a big thing that's a little bit different between the two, is how those hearings are run.
So possibly keeping PRDs to the mayor's point, but changing the approval process so it's not as restrictive would be something that the planning board would be looking at consistent with your assessments from other municipalities?
Yes, we can take a look at that.
And then lastly, I was looking at the rural residential map in the GIS, and there are some voluntary agricultural districts that I'm seeing in that area. Is that something the planning board would also be looking at as part of this review?
That would be more so on a council level. In order for us to have voluntary ag districts, there are some that are grandfathered that were there prior to incorporation of the town. In order for us to name additional voluntary ag districts, the town would have to have a voluntary ag ordinance. What that is, is a lot of times, properties can be named voluntary agricultural districts that protects them if they have sort of like a farming operation, you know, livestock, those types of things. That is something that, you know, I know some of our residents are interested in us taking a look at. That could be direction from council if council would like staff to take a look at that, possibly bring in the planning board, but ultimately, I think that's a council, if council so wishes, for the town to become a town that could offer that program.
There are a lot of consistencies or overlaps between the voluntary ag intentions and values and desires, along with what you guys outlined and what the residents are saying they like about the text amendment, so.
Yeah, you're going to see a lot of those in the rural areas of town.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, any other questions? Any other comments? Very good. We have a motion and a second for a continuance for 60 days for our August, whatever our August council meeting is, what date that is.
It's more as checking.
It's the second Thursday.
August 11th.
August 11th. Very good. No other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Stacy, you've got some work cut out for you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Some old business with our Mary Alice Warren and facility exempt users policy. Ms. Moore, if you'll pick that up for us.
Before the council is a draft recommendations regarding facility use exemption policy. The staff went back and tried to determine potential ways that the council can evaluate exempt users, excepting exempt users to utilize the recreational facilities. We went back to the board and saw where the nonprofit grant funding request had guidelines, which is what the council follows when awarding grant funding to nonprofits within the area. The council recently awarded a grant to senior services as an example. So what's before you incorporates some of the language from the Parks and Recreation Board, where the original language talks about organizations located in the town of Lewisville, but then it adds another section, given options to, for the council to consider other exempt users, and that wording is in line with the nonprofit grant funding application and policy. Also within this, item three does remove Mary Alice Warren Community Center from the user fees, because the user fees, you may recall, last month, the council adopted basically a tiered user fee for the Mary Alice Warren Community Center for exempt users. So we just want to put that distinction in here as well. But we felt like this may be a start in reviewing on how you want to address exempt users and exempt user applications, so it's mainly brought to you for, to help with discussion.
Council members, any questions?
Is there a reason that we need to be pushing this or looking at this this evening or discussing this evening, or can we, I mean, is there any urgency to this?
Well, I believe that's up to the council, but you do have three non-exempt requests that you have on hold right now. And we have been telling individuals when they call in here, inquiring about applying to be an exempt user, that there is a moratorium on that, so.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Council members, what's your pleasure?
Well, if we approve it as it is and we still want to tweak it, we can always make amendment to it later, correct?
Correct.
So we could at least get it out there, let people make their applications since the summer is upon us, and then it's going to come to, the process is going to come, and we're going to have to decide whether we want to approve them or not. So I'd make the motion we approve as brought to us.
And leave the door open for a little more.
Right.
See how the water flows downhill.
Tweak it after we get our feet wet.
Okay. Good. Thanks for picking up on the water analogy. Appreciate that.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Smithman, a second by Ms. Welch. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes.
Thank you, council.
I think under new business, we're ready for the Pam Orell show.
All right, we'll try to get through these quickly, since we discussed most of them last week, but if you have any more questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. The first one is Resolution 2022-040. This is to approve the printing of the newsletter contract with Sir Speedy, and this contract is just for the first three newsletters of next fiscal year. The cost will be $2,000 per newsletter printing, plus the cost of paper with a 30% markup on the cost of the paper.
Very good. Any questions?
Can you hear all these and then vote, or would you have to vote on each?
Take them one at a time, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Frankel makes a motion, Ms. Hunt makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Just a side note, I don't know of, really, I can't think of another community that I am familiar with that does a quarterly newsletter, like, or a bi-monthly newsletter like we do to keep our residents informed. In fact, when we do our surveys, we ask people how they, how they find, how they most stay in tune with what's going on in town, and they always cite the newsletter. So it's a great investment. Thank you. Pam, Resolution 041.
Okay, this is to approve a conflict of interest policy applicable to contracts and subawards of the town of Lewisville, supported by federal financial assistance, and this is a policy, again, required as part of our ARPA funding.
Any questions, sir? Pam, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smithman makes a motion, Ms. Hunt makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Next is Resolution 2022-042. This is to approve the contract for the HVAC maintenance contract with Air One Industries in the next fiscal year for a total cost of $10,629.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Frankel makes a motion, Ms. Welch makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Next is Resolution 2022-043. This is to approve change order number one to the three-year contract that you have with McCoy Services for street sweeping, and it's for $4,650 to add one additional monthly sweeping of the residential streets in the spring.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Dr. Sattler makes a motion, Ms. Foster makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Next is Ordinance 2022-026. This is authorizing the establishment and maintenance of the Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve Fund.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Next is Ordinance 2022-027. This is to amend the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Reserve Fund to suspend the annual contribution of $115,000 that is normally made from the general fund in the next fiscal year.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Next is Ordinance 2022-028. This is amending the Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve Fund to suspend the annual contribution from the general fund of $170,000 in the next fiscal year.
Any questions?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Foster makes a motion, Ms. Hunt makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Stacy, a break in the action for Pam.
Yes. Before you have an amendment to Chapter 16 of the Town Code related to the Mary Alice Warren Community Center, at the request of Mr. Moore, our facilities manager, he would like to add two provisions to the rules. One, that no confetti or glitter is allowed, and also that no patio furniture be brought from the patio to the inside of the building, so. He would like to add those two provisions to the rules for the community center.
Sounds like common sense?
Yeah, seems reasonable to me. I'll make the motion.
I had a question, though. You know, some places also don't allow sparklers, like for wedding receptions and all, and I wondered if the council wanted to include that.
You definitely could. We haven't had that issue yet, so I guess that might not have came up yet for us to think about, but that is a good point, Ms. Welch, that could be added if you so chose.
Do we want to broaden that? I mean, does sparklers, that would not preclude candles, right, for birthday parties?
We do have provisions already for candles and that sort of thing in the rules.
It has to be battery operated or something.
Right, yeah, no flame or anything like that.
Ms. Welch, would you like that added to the?
Yes, thank you. I think normally, a lot of times what happens, there are some burns, maybe with children, and sometimes dresses get burn spots on them, so, thank you.
Excuse me. That is already an item on?
Okay.
In the policy, it says no fireworks, pyrotechnics, or sparklers.
Okay. Thank you, Dora.
I'll second his motion.
Mr. Frankel made the motion, Dr. Sattler makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Back to you, Pam.
We have an ordinance 2022-031. This is authorizing the Forsyth County tax collector to collect our property taxes in the 2022-23 fiscal year.
Any questions?
Well, quick, just a quick question. They still get 1%?
That's correct.
Okay. Move for approval.
I'll second.
Dr. Sattler makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Then we have ordinance 2022-032, authorizing the Forsyth County tax collector to collect all of our property taxes for our prior years as well.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Frankel makes a motion, Ms. Welch makes a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're watching at home, it sounds like we moved through these rather quickly. If you recall, we do have a briefing the first Thursday of every month, and during that time, the council is thoroughly briefed on all of these so that we're prepared to vote on them when they come before us at tonight's meeting. So council members who have any questions from the first Thursday meeting to this meeting, have a chance to consider it and are prepared to take action. So we're not, this is not the first time we've seen these.
They're awesome, Mayor, if I may, covered during the course of our budget workshops.
Right.
And a lot of them are just simply to put in place contracts at the beginning of the new fiscal year.
There we go.
Comes July first.
So now you know what we do and why. Stacy, upcoming events at Shalford Square and town holidays.
I believe it's giving a biggie.
Flex our caps, let's do it.
This is the biggie.
We have Resolution 2022-044. This is amending our contract with Forsyth County Community Policing. We have a three-year contract with them. We're getting ready to go into the last year of that three-year contract, and so this is amending that contract to add one additional deputy.
Any questions?
Yes, I think Pam, if I'm not correct, the purpose in doing the, having the additional deputy, we will have 24-hour coverage?
That's my understanding, yes.
And we'll have, we'll have, right now, there are some times when folks are on vacation and away for training where we have minimum coverage. This will make sure we have the full coverage that we need throughout town.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smithman makes a motion, Ms. Foster makes a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now to upcoming events.
Okay, events at Shalford Square, we've got quite a few things going on, the summer getting geared up, the kids finally out of school. So tomorrow night, June 10th, there's a movie night, Raiders of the Lost Ark is going to be shown. June 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., is our Street Party and Food Truck Festival. Band of Oz is performing, and the concert will start at 7:00 p.m. July 2nd, from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m., is our July 4th Celebration Legacy Motown Review Concert. July 16th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., is the Kids in America Concert, which is a totally '80s tribute band. July 22nd is another family movie night featuring Tom and Jerry, where the Girl Scouts will host Bingo, starting at 6:45 prior to the start of the movie. And into August, we have two concerts. August 6th is The British Invaders, and August 27th is Shot Through the Heart, a Bon Jovi tribute band, both of those from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Something for everyone.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Stacy? Stace?
Okay.
Management report, please.
Yeah, I wanted to update you guys. This past weekend, June 3rd, 4th, and 5th, our Public Safety Advisory Committee hosted, along with emergency management Forsyth County, Lewisville Fire Department, and some other agencies, a certification for 24 members who became CERT members. About half of those who were Lewisville residents included three of our board and committee members, and six of those indicated that they would like to become instructors down the road. So it was a successful CERT training this past weekend. I just wanted to update you guys on that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Our thanks to Harlan Cobert, who's our chairman of our Public Safety Committee. He put a lot of work and effort into this, so thank you, Harlan. So do we now put a planner's hat on? Do you have a planner's report?
I do not have a planner's report.
Back to the intra-manager's hat, then. We have no attorney's report tonight, however, we do want to extend our wishes to Bo for a speedy recovery and a get well soon. He's been under the weather, that's why he's not with us tonight. Bo, we're thinking of you, we miss you, and we hope to see you back here soon. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder that the Summer Leadership Session will be August 16th, and at this time, we have four applications.
Very good. Ms. Hunt, do you want to take your soapbox for just a moment?
Yes. I do want to extend another thank you to the staff. We recently updated the website with a form so that we don't have to worry about printing it out and then sending it in. So for those of you guys that are watching, please take an opportunity to go to our website and click on the click here button, I think that's something, what it's named, I'm not sure, and register. We're going to do 30, is that right, Dora?
It'll be a max of 30, yes, ma'am.
Right, yep. Looking forward to all the middle and high school students. Thank you.
Very good. A wonderful opportunity to become familiar with the town of Lewisville and how your town government works. Stacy, our items at briefing, please.
Yes, on June 2nd, at the Town Council briefing meeting, ordinance 2022-024, a budget amendment to increase the budget for vehicle gasoline repairs and maintenance for $3,000 was approved. Also, ordinance 2022-025, a budget amendment to increase the budget for repairs and maintenance at Jack Warren Park for $5,000 was approved.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, sometimes we do take action at our first Thursday of the month meeting, and when we do, we like to report those out at this meeting so that we have them as part of our official record again. We're at the second opportunity for public comments. Any of you in the audience wish to come forward and share their thoughts with the council? Anything at all? Very good. If you folks are at home, would like to submit a comment, you can do that to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, For council comments, I would like to recognize Mrs. Joyce Walker, who just happened to be in the audience tonight, our former town clerk. Joyce, it's always good to see you. Life is good with you and your family?
I came to support Jeff tonight. He told me he was bringing a veteran in, and you know I love to support veterans, so I came this night.
Yes, ma'am. It's always good to see you. You're always welcome. Council members, it's up to you.
I have a couple of small things.
Yes, ma'am.
When, especially at the regular meetings, obviously, we have the material in front of us, and then sometimes it's up here, but then there are times when I'm not seeing what you're talking about up there. It's very helpful, I think, for people in the audience, so as much as possible, if we can, whatever's being said, have the visual aid for the audience, that would be fantastic.
You mean to have the attachments reflected up there?
Yes, ma'am. Anything that is being reviewed would be helpful, just for your consideration. And then finally, thank you, Melissa, for what you said about staff and the budget. I want to just pause also and just really reinforce Pam's leadership. I have been really, really impressed with all the budget work that you've done, the policy and procedure manual, the way you lay everything out. You create, for me, a lot of confidence in what you prepare, you follow up quickly, you are there and available to answer questions, so I just, I want to thank you for all that you do to certainly make me, as a council member, comfortable with what we've done here tonight, so thank you.
And a penny doesn't go anywhere if it doesn't go through Pam's hands.
That's right.
Council members, anything else?
Yeah, Stacy, did I, did I hear you and understand correctly that there's a movie night tomorrow night or Friday night?
Yes, sir. This is actually the third time that we're attending this movie night. The first two times it was rained out.
Yeah, that's the reason I was asking. I really hate to hear that. I mowed six acres of hay this afternoon.
Uh-oh. Well, our fingers crossed that this one, third time's a charm, right?
Well, in the Vianna Civic Club, we will be doing hot dogs and corn dogs tomorrow night and popcorn, so come out.
Cool.
During the movie night, is that?
Previous two will feed you before it and during.
Anything else, council members?
Yes, my mayor. I had, just of interest, and you may have seen this on Facebook, the Yadkin County Historical and Genealogical Society is having a speaker on Monday, the 20th, and she has written a book about the crossing of the Shallow Ford. And I think that'll be fascinating. Years ago, I actually crossed it when I was involved in president of the Historical Society, and it was exciting, to say the least. But, of course, that was used until there were bridges and the water height had to be just right, but there's those stones that make it possible. So I'd encourage anyone who's interested in that to contact the Yadkinville Historical Society.
Jane, do you know where that is going to be? It's going to be the Yadkinville Arts Center? I'm trying to think, babe.
Actually, it says that the speaker is Marsha Phillips, and it will be at the Davie County Library. And she will enlighten us on the crossing of the Shallow Ford.
Very good. Thank you for that. Council members, anything else this evening? Staff members, we're good? Alrighty. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Smithman makes a motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen at home, thank you so much for joining us. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, we're always glad to see your faces here. And we are adjourned until our July meeting. Thank you.